Okay.
Mr. McGinnis, have our prayer today, can I pledge?
Yes. I'd like, I invited Mark Bethay, pastor of First Baptist, to come pray for us before the meeting. And I just want to say before the prayer, light shines in the darkness. Light shines in the darkness. And Mark and I were roommates in college, we're best friends, and I love him. And he loves this city, I love this city. And this is a unifying point for all of us, to stand behind First Baptist in light of the recent events, so.
Thank you, Mark, for lighting the light in clear.
I wanted to take it just a moment and for I pray and say thank you to our Montgomery's Fire Department, Montgomery's Police Department did an absolutely astounding job, taking what could have been a catastrophic situation in our church, and mitigating it to where it's very manageable. And so I just, on behalf of our church, before we begin today, I just wanted to say thank you to our Fire Department and our Police Department, they did an absolutely remarkable job. And I just wanted to say thank you before I prayed.
Very good.
Though if I could offer up a prayer to you now.
Very good.
Thank you. Or we pause for a moment and say thank you for the goodness of who you are. Remind in Second Timothy that you've given us not a spirit of fear, but of power, love, and self-control. So we're in the face of evil and the face of difficult days that we all face, Lord, your truth in your word is an anchor in the midst of the storm. So we pray that your word would continue to lead and guide us. Or that we would stand on the authority of your word, that you would give these men and women who are charged as leaders of our city, or that you would give them your wisdom to lead in your way. Or we're not wise enough, we're not strong enough, we're not powerful enough, we don't have all the answers, but Lord, we know that you do. So Lord, would we humble ourselves? Would we trust in you as the author and perfecter of our faith? We thank you for those who have put themselves in harm's way to keep us safe. Or would you protect them? Would you give them strength and comfort? Would you give their families peace as they walk out the door each day to do the jobs that you've given on their heart to do for our city? We pray blessings upon our city, that we would follow and trust in you, Lord. We thank you for First Baptist Church and the beacon of light that it is in the center of downtown Montgomery. We thank you for the faith community here in Montgomery. Thank you how we band together in times of difficulty, in times of storms. Again, we ask that your word would be a lamp unto our feet and a light unto our path. It's in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, God bless.
Please, Ryan, for pledge.
The pledge of the Regent, to the fire, of United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, ever so.
Counsel, I need a motion on the work session minutes for September the 21st.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Have motion to adopt, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
A motion for the regular council meeting minutes on the 21st.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Have motion to adopt, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
A motion on the recess part of the meeting on the 28th of September.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Have motion to adopt, all in favor, raise your hand.
Five with seven abstaining.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, you're up.
You go first.
Good evening. I'm gonna start my mayor's message off by deferring to my wife, Tamika Reed, and her board from Move Montgomery, who I believe have a presentation they'd like to make. So this time, I'm gonna ask if you would please come up with the rest of your board and share what we're presenting, or what you all are presenting this evening. Thank you.
Any microphone?
Good evening, I'm Tamika Reed, and I am the founder of Move Montgomery, and I have with me my executive board. We're here to present a check to the Medical Advocacy and Outreach Program. We had the pleasure of joining efforts with them on September 18th to participate in their Tread Red event, which was a 2.5 mile run to benefit their organization. And today, we are here to present a check for all of the participants who signed up for the Move Montgomery team that participated in that event. So we would like for their representatives to come up and say a few words before we present them with this check.
Good evening, my name is Doug McLeod, I am the coordinator of Tread Red Walk and Run for Medical Advocacy and Outreach. It is a run that raises money for people living with HIV, it also raises money for people with diabetes. We do prevention education, and we do a lot of medical services here in Montgomery. And now, we have stretched across 18,659 square miles, so we cover 28 counties. And in that, we have an office in Dothen, Alabama. We just opened a one in Atmore, Alabama. And we have 10 satellite clinics as well. So we'd like to say thank you to Move Montgomery for participating on September 18th, which is a 30-day walk and run. So our finale will end in Dothen, Alabama, October the 16th.
Good evening, I'm Ashley Tarrant, I'm the Chief Operations Officer for Medical Advocacy and Outreach, and just want to say thank you for your donation. Donations really help our program and us to serve the community. So we are very appreciative, and thank you to Move Montgomery.
And on behalf of Move Montgomery Health and Wellness Task Force, we'd like to present this check for $3,000 for the 125 Montgomery residents that joined the Move Montgomery team for this event. So thank you very much.
Center stage. Come on in, the counsel.
If you'll take a big step back, too.
You in that club?
Yeah.
Court, I need three.
Say say.
Cameron, you told me if you can get a good picture.
Thank you. What's up, Joey? Come on, Joey.
Cool. You gotta match that money.
Good job. Good job. Good job. Okay. Good job. Okay.
Got that working, so I guess now we can thank Move Montgomery and Medical Advocacy and Outreach again for their work here in the community. Thank you so much for what you do. At this time, we're gonna move right along to the financial update. And we'll show a little bit in terms of how our taxes are coming along, and if we would, put up the first slide. We see the sales and use tax revenue ended the month of September, slightly over 7% compared to September of the previous year. And what we expected and stated in August of the year, the year-over-year sales and use tax revenue would end at a double-digit number of more than 12.5% of positive growth rate. So again, we're seeing that money come through, sales tax revenue that is helping us as a city through that revenue. We're glad to see this trend continue. Next slide, please. We were expecting a lodging tax revenue would at least break even at the end of fiscal year 2021. However, this tax continued to rally ahead and end the year with a positive growth rate of nearly 5% year-over-year, which shows us that actually people are traveling a little bit more. We're starting, you know, we continue to see that tourism number come back, and we see that robust number there in May, year-over-year. And so we're glad that for our tourism industry and for our hospitality industry, that people are coming to Montgomery, and they're staying in our hotels, and they're visiting our restaurants and doing things that travelers do, whether it be for sports, leisure, or other reasons. We're glad that they are still coming here, and we're glad to see that number year-over-year being at a 5% positive note, a positive rate, excuse me. Next slide, please. The gasoline tax, again, we'll see it in positive numbers. Had a positive growth rate in September of nearly 11% year-over-year, and the year ended with an overall growth rate here of about 9.5%. So we're glad to see that. Again, I think it just speaks to the level of movement people started to take, really after late spring, if you will, and that continue on through the summer and certainly early fall. Final slide, please. The alcoholic and beverage tax revenue had a negative growth rate of less than 1% in September compared to the previous year. It appears that some proceeds had not arrived by the end of September, which caused this revenue stream to be negative for the month. Overall, year-over-year, the alcoholic beverage tax revenue had a positive growth rate of 3%. Again, all positive numbers for us and positive trends that we are really excited about and we're glad to have. So this gives us a sense of how the fiscal year ended on a good note for us, and we're, again, glad about that. And we're hopeful about where the end of this calendar year will take us, which we think will be along those same numbers as it relates to the various taxes and revenues that we see. So that would conclude my financial update, and I just have one more item that I want to cover. And that is, I want to thank the Montgomery Planning Commission for unanimous vote to recommend that the city rename Jeff Davis Avenue as Fred D. Gray Avenue. As we commemorate the 66th anniversary of the Montgomery bus boycott, it's important for us to keep Attorney Gray's service and leadership in mind, not just in that, but also certainly Browder versus Gale, as it relates to the city itself and what transpired in that court case. I think it's important, and many, many others that I could really go down the list and name. But when we think about our city, we're becoming a destination for people who want to come and learn more about the history of this country, the good and the bad. And block to block, this city is a tangible link to the history. And the good we strive to emulate, the bad drives us to change, and drives us to evolve and to move closer to a more perfect union. I think that's important because it didn't just happen by itself. It happened with Attorney Gray and many, many others. But there's no better time and there's no better testimony to our path forward than renaming the street, in my opinion, after a local hero and someone who was born right here in Montgomery on that street. And Attorney Gray's defended his career at the forefront of some of our nation's most landmark civil rights cases. And it's important that as a Montgomery native who grew up at 705 West Jeff Davis Avenue, for me to see his request honored. And it's been some time, it's been a number of months as we've gone through the process, but we're here now, and we are here to be able to hopefully bring this to a formal end. And I'm glad to see two of his adult children here, Attorney Fred Gray Jr. and Attorney Stanley Gray here in the audience. Because it's important for us to recognize the sacrifice that Attorney Gray made when he left Montgomery, left Alabama State University to go to Case Western Reserve, but vowed to return and destroy everything segregated he could find. And so when I think of heroes who exemplify the best in our city, he certainly is at the forefront of that. And naming the street in his honor, I think, would be a reminder of all that is possible, not only in Montgomery, but in our nation. And I believe that for many young people, not only who grew up on that part of the city, but in all parts of the city, they can see someone who not only changed this country with obstacles and opposition, but changed it in a way with dignity, in a way that was done with class. And so I hope that tonight, the City Council will vote to approve my request to rename Jeff Davis Avenue in honor of Attorney Fred D. Gray. And I want to thank again the Montgomery Planning Commission for the unanimous vote to recommend this. And I just think it would be a tremendous tribute to someone who has done so much for the city, for the state and this nation, to honor him in this way. And I hope that that vote will pass here tonight. So thank you so much, Mr. President, for giving me the time and opportunity to speak. And I will turn it back over to you for the rest of the agenda.
I'd like to go ahead and move this up now off the agenda up to this time, since you've made the conversation. We do have one person that's signed up to speak on this, Bertha Moncrief. If you're in the audience, Bertha Moncrief. Yes, right here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Bertha Moncrief, and I reside at 120 West Jeff Davis here in Montgomery, Alabama. And I'd like to say to you all that I've lived on the west side of Montgomery all of my life. Matter of fact, I was born right there off of Rosa Park, at Flood and Rosa Park. And I then lived on Stone Street here in Montgomery, on Grady Street here in Montgomery. And I met my husband, the late Multi Pruitt, here in Montgomery, where we married, bought a home on Bowman Street here in Montgomery, and then moved to West Jeff Davis Avenue here in Montgomery, where we revitalized that historic home in which I live. So I come here today to say to you all that I am for you all changing the name, or asking that you all would change the name to Fred Gray Avenue. I think it would be a vital asset to our community. So if you would do so, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Counsel, I need a look.
Before we make a motion, let me also say, I emailed the mayor as well, and he sent me a response back that there are 54 residents that said yes to this. So I think that's a good number of people who have said they want to do the same thing that the mayor is seeking to do. So I think, you know, I'm quite sure all this council is already on board, but I did, you know, I asked for that number, and he gave me that. So we appreciate you coming, and I can see you in the numbers.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Need a motion to suspend rules on this item?
Mr. President, motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Motion is adopted.
Very good. Congratulations. Okay. Next, let's go back to the first item on the agenda now.
Hearing on proposed ordinance resounding.
No, I'm sorry, hold on, Ms. Blaylock.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I have, I guess, I'm sorry. You have a line here.
Mr.
Audrey, go ahead.
Go ahead.
If we could, I wanted to have Dr. White and a professor from Auburn University speak with us about Highway 80 corridor. Is Dr. White in here?
He's right in the front row.
Oh, you were back there, I'm sorry. And so if we'll just give him a few minutes and let him speak to us.
Can we yield one second after we approve number four of your mind? I want to jump. I thought we had the naming, the street name sign.
They are.
If we could just take the picture since we jumped it up to number one before we go to him, if that was okay with the council?
That'd be great. We brought the signs in here, let's take a picture of them, okay? Yeah, let's do that, right quick, right. Bring them up.
Thank you, Ms. Graham.
We'll do that and get them. Take them, take them. Take them.
Pick your one and five there, and then, that's all, get metal hair, man. The gray, the gray man. The gray man.
You got the boards?
Yes.
You just couldn't take that five o'clock, so. Hey, man, won't you?
Yeah, wanna hold on another five, too?
Hey, everyone's good. That's a real nice.
Okay.
All right.
We got it.
Everybody, right here, one, two, three.
Very good.
Hold on, hold on, don't move, don't move, don't move. When they say coordinate, coordinate, you know we gotta hit coordinate.
Rondé, look at everybody with the cameras, CC.
Go ahead, you got that Polaroid.
Check that guy over there, Rondé.
Cameron, you good, Cameron? Hold on, one more, one more. One more for Alabama State. Hold on, one more. It's for Alabama State, that's Alabama, one more. Photo op with him. Hold on, Cameron, come on.
Hey, I think that guy might carry a red shirt, got a camera.
Y'all almost did this for, this was AG Buzz, man, y'all almost did it.
All right.
You need us to move over some?
What you need, Cam?
Can I move over? Sharon got a camera, call them. Two, one.
Thanks, sir.
Rondé, that guy back there. That damn shirt, and Rondé.
Bro, great.
Good save. Do you have a shot?
I gotta say. You gotta be proud of you, too.
Y'all done great, y'all done great. Okay. All right, now. All right, now we got it organized, let's go back to Ms. Graham and your, and Dr. White.
Dr. White, if you would, please, thank you so much for being here and speaking with us. What, Dr. White, let me say before he present, what he's going to talk about tonight is important. We understand that West Montgomery needs so many resources in order to come to a certain level and to grow along with the city of Montgomery. And what he's presenting and going to talk about tonight is a avenue that we can secure that we will be able to get some additional grants. And we have an excellent grant writer who had a chance to speak with. So I'm so excited about what she'll be able to do from this, what we do today. So take it forward, Dr. White.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To councilperson Jen Wright, Vice President Calhoun, to our mayor, and all of our city council persons. It is a pleasure to be here with you. I teach at Alabama State University, I've been here for 27 years. And I come representing a research collaborative that is done with faculty from different universities around the country. And I'm sure we know that we are sitting on top of a gold mine, and that gold mine is our civil rights history. And I was also a part of the Gray family. I grew up with Fred and Stanley, we lived in the same neighborhood in Tuskegee. I was one of Fred Gray's law clerks as well. So he's very dear to our heart. He also helped us write a book called Highway 80, A March Through Alabama Civil Rights Corridor. And our research focuses on the contributions that have been made regarding the civil rights movement throughout Highway 80, which of course in Alabama starts in Lee County and goes to Sumter County. So what we've done is, for the past 10 years, we've been chronicling events, we've been chronicling testimonies, and doing spatial data, and all types of deep, what we call deep dive research. And one of the things that we would like to encourage the city to do is, number one, to develop a plan that specifically identifies Highway 80 as being what we call in the academic world, a cultural heritage corridor. We titled our book, Civil Rights Corridor, which distinguishes it from other areas in the country and focuses on the major events that have taken place. And we also link them together. Now, what this does is that it brings to the area the attention that it deserves from all levels, beginning with the national level, right? The US Parks Service pays a lot of attention to what we call cultural heritage corridors. And after that, there are all types of incentives that come with that. This model was taken from the Gullagichi Corridor, which runs North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, and North Florida. And it was designated about 15 years ago to be a cultural heritage corridor. We were invited to come up there and participate in research. And we got the idea to bring it back to Montgomery, to start here to designate Highway 80, beginning in Montgomery, as a cultural heritage site. And what that would require from the US Parks Service would be a lot of paperwork from us, doing the demographic research, the spatial data, all of those types of things that we do at our universities, to make the case to them, and they designate it as such. And then all types of things happen, right? Congress gets activated, various departments, federal departments become activated to give specific, certain attention to this area. So we feel that it's a win-win for everyone involved. What the faculty and what the researchers get out of it is that we get an opportunity to continue to do our research, but it's done, you know, under the auspices, not only of municipalities, but it becomes a state function as well. And so we all know the windfalls and the benefits of the economic development associated with tourism alone. But the attention that a cultural heritage corridor would also get, could also help in other areas in forms of education, in forms of economic development, and environmental justice, and all of those types of issues. So we wanted to come and to just let ourselves be known to you. We've also developed a technology where we use 3D imagery and GIS, and we're trying to boot up some of our things to illustrate to you on the board. And John Shannon, if you can just put anything up, that would be good. We've only got a few seconds. But we've developed a technology to where we do 3D imagery, and we've done, we've worked with the USS Alabama, and we've worked with other cultural heritage sites, too. And you can take a look and see what we're capable of doing. But what we are doing is we're going to different sites, churches, buildings, places where significant events happen, and we're using 3D imagery to tell the story. And so it's a use of technology, it's cutting edge. And this puts Montgomery Mayor on the cutting edge of even during tourism and so forth, because you can develop a virtual tour of the city. And let's say a business wants to create a virtual tour, the tour could actually start from their doorstep, and go from there to the Capitol, to Dexter Avenue Memorial Baptist Church, to the Lynchon Museum, to, so people can get a virtual idea of what their physical experience is gonna be like. And what that does is, it enhances people's desire to come to the city. Because being an instructor, teaching African-American history for as long as I have, I've come to know the benefit and the value of it. And it is probably the number-one human interest story that is in existence today. So we've published on it. Attorney Fred Gray lent it some of his researchers to our book, our chapter on Browder versus Gale. And this is an ongoing project. And so people from all over, I think Rabbi Alpert is here, and he gave us a chapter in the next coming edition about his experiences and the boycott, and his experiences with the Selma to Montgomery march. So we're getting these human interest stories and we're publishing them. And we would love to see the city to embrace this concept and to take it to the next level, right? Use it, as you see here, this is the Selma to Montgomery, this is Highway 80, going into Selma, and what, we don't have the capability to do it, but we can click on those little buttons, and different interviews pop up that we've done. We've interviewed foot soldiers, we've interviewed, you know, people who were there. We've had people to donate to us pictures and video footage that no one else has seen. And so it's a wealth of information. And another aspect of this is that Alabama State University, Auburn, Tuskegee, Texas A&amp;M, Georgia Tech, University of Alabama, all of us are working together to do this project. And it's, there hadn't been anything like this to ever have taken place, really, to this extent. We're sharing research with each other, we're sharing classrooms with each other, President Jim Wright. And we're doing all of these things, you know, to try to maximize as much potential as we can. So the economic development piece actually comes in once the machinery is put in place, and establishing a cultural heritage corridor, or as we call it, a civil rights corridor, we think would help.
Sounds great.
Yeah. And so with that, I have a resolution that I presented to the council and the mayor, um, to, um, do a resolution that we want to, um, name Highway Eighty, the portion that's in the city of Montgomery, as the civil rights corridor, so that we can have a foundation for them to continue to work off of, and then open doors for the grants that's gonna help build in the city, and gonna help bring funding, and so we can do greater things here in the city of Montgomery.
Great deal. Motion to suspend rules?
Move to suspend the rules?
All right, raise your hand.
Move to adopt.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right.
Did you, did you copy of this?
Thank you. Okay, now we go first thing on the, first item on the agenda.
I was out of one.
Tanya, now you come up.
Hearing on proposed ordinance resoning two point nineteen acres located approximately one hundred feet western Whitumka Highway, and approximately three hundred feet south of Anderson Road, from an A's one dist, and B two district to a B two district.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone would like to speak on this, come forward this time. Seeing none, Tanya, you wanna tell us more about it?
Yeah, this is to expand American Oak on Whitumka Highway, um, and Planning Commission had a unanimous yes.
That's a good idea, okay. Counseling, the motion to, uh, I, I declare a public hearing, it's been held, it's part for counseling, the motion to adopt.
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules. Move to adopt, I'm sorry.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Item two, hearing on proposed ordinance resoning two parcels at the southeast corner of Ann Street and Chestnut Street, from a B four district to an M one district.
Okay, this is, uh, we got two people signed up for that, Ed Fleming, you wanna speak or, or you just hear us talk about it? And Paul Barquette, both of y'all together. Ed, you and Paul together.
Uh, thank you, City Council, I'm Ed Fleming, Hodges Commercial Real Estate, uh, this property is, uh, on Ann and Chestnut, and it is in Ms. Marjorie Johnson's District Three. Uh, the buyer is wanting to put a, uh, national car wash there, um, it's, uh, on, the lot's one point six acres, he's gonna invest about a million, a million two there, uh, have eight to ten employees and a manager, uh, eighty percent of the property is already zoned M one, which is the correct zoning that we're supposed to have, and we've got one little section that's zoned B four, and we'd like to get it all made into M one, to be contiguous on all that.
Tanya, is that?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct, and I see we, we didn't get, it's appealed?
Yes, sir, the planning, there was a motion to approve, but there was no second, so the Planning Commission took no action.
Okay, all right. Okay. Public hearing's been held, part for the council, Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. President, I move to, uh, approve.
That's it, all right, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Item three, hearing on proposed ordinance resoning one lot located at thirty-four forty-seven Norman Bridge Road, from an O one district to a B two district.
Okay, nobody's signed it. This is a public hearing, anyone would like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, declare public hearing's been held, Tanya?
Yes, sir, Planning Commission, same as before, made a motion to approve, no second, so no action was taken.
Okay. It's property for the council, any motion?
Uh, Mr. President, move to approve.
Yeah, most adopt, all right, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
Very good, thank you.
Item five, review of apartment complexes as follows, Ravenwood Apartments, twenty-two thirty Woodley Square.
Okay, Representative Ravenwood here, please, you know, yeah, we got.
Here we go.
Yes, ma'am, okay. This one's yours, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Mitchell?
It's gonna be mine.
Your name for the record, ma'am?
Uh, Kenesha Harvey, property manager of Ravenwood Apartments.
Okay, Kenesha, okay. All right, what's our question we're gonna deal here, deal with here?
Um, our question is more pertain to safety issues. Um, I just want to see what you guys, I think you have got your, they got their business license correct?
Yes.
So, the biggest issue was, before we got to the business license, was safety concerning Ravenwood. I wanna know, what do you have in place for your, your safety protocol out of Ravenwood?
Okay, as it pertains to the security of issues on site, um, the new owners, can you hear me?
Yeah.
You can't hear me, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, much better, yeah.
Um, so as it pertains to the security issues on site, um, the new ownership that is over Ravenwood Apartments is working diligently to address the issues as far as safety and concerns of the community. Um, we are com, uh, committed to improving conditions at the complex with the installation of gates, our step, uh, camera system, LED lighting throughout, and physical security on site. Uh, we firmly believe that Ravenwood should be a safe place for our residents to stay. Um, we have a zero tolerance policy for any type of crime or criminal activity. Um, if a resident is in violation of a lease agreement, it'll be automatic termination of their lease. Um, we will go, we will take the necessary actions needed to trespass any type of resident or guest that violates the crime policy at Ravenwood, um, and we strongly believe, like I said, in making the safe, safe environment and community. Um, we do currently have onsite security, it is through master's security, so they are required to, um, drop written reports in the drop box daily at their shift. Um, so we have Monday through Friday, one PM to five PM, Saturday through Sunday is eleven AM to three PM, and then nightly throughout the week is eleven P, eleven PM to three AM, or either ten PM to two AM. So, in addition to the master's security, we do have an onsite courtesy officer who is employed with MPD, so he lives onsite as a courtesy officer, and he helps to patrol the property. Um, we also, again, are implementing the step security system camera, we've already paid for that, we made a purchase, so it'll be another, uh, week to two weeks before they are installed. They're gonna be throughout the breezeways and on each building onsite, and, um, they can remotely watch the cameras twenty-four, twenty-four seven, and, um, it will alarm someone if they are, you know, engaging in criminal activity, so. Uh, with the new ownership over Ravenwood, they are taking it very seriously about improving the property, and definitely investing the money to make it a better community.
Okay. Any other questions, council?
That's all I got, she answered all.
Very good, thank you, you answered the question.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Next is Serenity Apartments at the Park, forty-nine hundred Plaza Drive.
Okay, Representative Serenity?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Mines as well?
Okay, your name for the record, ma'am?
Um, I'm from the, representative of apartments at the park.
Okay, I, pull your, you pull your mask down.
My name's Sonia Washington.
Sonia Washington?
Ms. Washington, yes.
Okay, pull your mask, you can pull your mask down, we can hear you better. Okay, now, Ms. Washington, okay, Mr. Mitchell, you got some questions?
So, business department, do they have, currently have a business license?
Uh, they currently do not have their license, however, they have, uh, paid for the license, they have, uh, also pulled, uh, permits and hired an electrician to care for some of the electrical issues that were actually preventing the licensing, so we are awaiting the certificate of occupancy on that. They have paid, uh, and reported their, uh, anticipated gross receive.
Okay.
So that's, that's no?
That is no.
That's no. And currently, how long would it take them to get their business license? At what point, so in two weeks they should have their business license?
Well, uh, that's gonna be depending upon how long it's gonna take for them to cure, uh, whatever the issue is on that certificate of occupancy.
So I guess the question that we always ask, how can you take a license from somebody that don't have a license?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Stacy, have we started the process of filing injunctions in circuit court with these apartment complexes that do not have licenses?
We have to go through the process, starting with business licenses, to send the notices out.
What's that mean? No?
Okay.
No, 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 hold on, I, I didn't.
Go ahead.
Do we, 'cause last, I think it was two council meetings ago, you said that a remedy to this is, we could file an injunction in circuit court.
Correct, and the first step is that business licenses has to send out a fifteen day notice, give them time to come into compliance, and once those processes have been, um, once they've gone through those processes, then we need a request from finance, from the mayor, or from the council to file a petition for injunction.
All right, well, we met a month ago, so I know there's not been some licenses done in a month on the apartment complex, does this council need to vote tonight to give you quasi-authority to go do file injunction?
If they've received the fifteen day notice?
The mayor's, I mean, I think the mayor said he could do it as well, I think during that meeting.
The question is, whether or not they've gotten a fifteen day notice?
They've received a ten day notice, we had not, uh, approved the fifteen day notice until just recently.
How many days has that been?
So now, we gotta do, send them a five day notice.
Now, you get a total of twenty-five days.
Give me a while, I'll get out of college, but I can figure that one out. So, so, I'm so confused, so where, so where are we, I mean?
I guess Ms. Blalock, question for you, Ms. Blalock, so I would have to bring them back for a show cause, correct, 'cause we just brought them up in, for a review?
That's one, what you've done with several of the others, and I adjusted the resolution not only show cause for revocation of a business license, but revoking their right to operate a business without a business license. So it will, it will take setting up a hearing, but that's a whole process.
I think we revised the process, so you don't have to revoke their right to do a business, uh, to do business, if they don't have a business license, then finance can send out an order, basically telling them to cease and desist, and we can rely on that order to go forward with the petition for injunction. Again, they've gotta get the fifteen day notice, it's gotta be by certified mail, then they've gotta receive the, the notice to cease and desist, and we can then move forward with filing for an injunction.
So Stacy, are you recommending that we send out a fifteen day notice at this point?
If that, if, if we're at that point, then yeah, if, if they don't have a business license, then absolutely we can do that.
Because they did some positive from the ten day, which requested that they contact.
Right. And that, and that's the difference, before, they were sending out a ten day notice that just required that the owner contact finance and work with them to get their business license. Since our last council meeting, we've changed those procedures, the letter now says they have to come into compliance within fifteen days.
Within fifteen days.
Ms. Washington, do you know how long it's gonna take you to kinda get your stuff done that you need out at the apartment?
Um, the only thing we have left to take care of is, um, the electrical work, the permit has been pulled, we have a licensed electrician that's, is currently working on it now, um, I could, about another couple of weeks, because we do have a lot of units that has to be completed, so about another couple of weeks, I think, um, we can have that completed.
So by the time you get this notice and you get your fifteen days, that should be about as much time as you need, so we can move forward and just.
Yeah, Marilyn, Marilyn.
Oh, yeah, we, send them fifteen days.
All right. Yes, all right. What's the, what's the, what's the end result here, fifteen days?
Yeah, we gonna send them a, a notice out.
All right.
For those fifteen days.
Okay.
So they should come in compliance before, yes.
So you got your fifteen days to get there, okay? Two weeks.
Tony McMarilyn.
All right.
I got a question, is that business days or calendar days? Hey Stacy, is that business days or calendar days?
Calendar days.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Washington, you know what we gotta do?
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Item six, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Brother Seafood and Grill at nineteen fifty-four Rosa L Parks Avenue.
Okay, this is a public hearing, yes, sir, your name for the record?
My name is Daniel James.
All right, Daniel. It's a public hearing, anyone would like to speak against this item, please come forward?
Sir.
I'm looking for, it's a public hearing, anyone want, looking for, anyone wants to speak against this item? Seeing none, declare public hearing's been held.
Wait, I know somebody's gonna make a ruling, before we make a ruling, they got some good food. If you have not been there, I go there, eat often, he has some good seafood, it's in the old TNT building, oh man, there's some good food over there, size and all, so everybody, go by there and check him out.
I declare the public hearing has been held, it's part for the council, any motion to suspend the rules?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, motion to suspend the rules.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. President, move to approve.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, and I think that's a good advertisement.
I think someday next time.
I'll stop by and get me something to eat.
Me too.
I'm hungry now.
We'll come together, but not break the rules.
Very good, thank you, now, good luck with the business.
Item four, application for special events retail local license by City of Montgomery Parks and Rec Department, doing business as Riverwalk Wine Festival at thirty Water Street.
Okay, uh, Ms. Kay, you, you don't need, I, I, folks, y'all need to talk about, this is, I need a motion to suspend the rules, okay?
You're gonna have a public hearing, Mr. President.
Oh, I have to, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Got in a hurry again. This is a public hearing, anyone would like to speak against this item, please come forward? Seeing none, declare public hearing's been held, it's part for the council.
Mr. President, when is the event? Anybody know when the event, the wine? Yes, when?
It's Friday.
This Friday, yeah, this Friday. Okay, you have most to spend rules?
Mr. President, go ahead. Move to suspend the rules.
Most to suspend the rules?
Have most to spend rules, Mr. Calhoun got there first, all right, raise your hand.
Yeah, who made the motion?
Mr. Calhoun.
Okay, unanimous.
All right, now I need a motion to, Ms. Johnson wants to make the motion on adoption, I think.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
He served good wine.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
There you go, two people pushing for that wine, okay, good.
Item eight, resolution appointing Ed Bertorelli to the housing authority.
Okay, Ed, Mr. Grimes?
What?
In motion, I need a motion to suspend rules?
Motion to suspend the rules?
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item nine, resolution assessing the cost of abatement of public, the assessment of unsafe structures at various locations.
Is anyone here that'd like to talk about this item? Got any, you got an item on here that you wanna talk about?
Anybody wanna appeal?
These are appeals, and if you gotta appeal, they have some pretty good balances in here, be paid off for these properties, so, okay, no one, no ones, I need a motion to suspend the rule?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item ten, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
You have most to spend rules?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Okay.
And council, I have put before you contingencies, for, this has been approved by the mayor for District Nine, ten thousand to Tuckerbachi Area Council, five thousand to West End Boys and Girls Club, five thousand to Chisholm Boys and Girls Club, one thousand to Bellwood HOA, two thousand to Halcyon South HOA, two thousand to Woodmere HOA, one thousand to Copperfield HOA, twenty-five hundred to Parks and Recreation for Botanical Gardens, three hundred to Southern Youth Leadership Development Institute.
Five hundred. Anybody else got anything? You need a motion to, okay.
Um, I wanna give, um, I need to give, uh, one hundred and fifteen dollars, one fifteen to Woodcrest Neighborhood Association.
One hundred and fifteen dollars to Woodcrest Neighborhood Association.
Uh-huh, and I wanna give, um, twelve hundred to the Jamel, Jamel, Jamari Terrell Williams Foundation.
Okay.
You have most to adopt this?
Mr. President, move for approval.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
I'm fifty bro. All right, to speak to us.
Hey, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Before we do that, real quick, um, I sent you guys a text message today, and I talked to
Oh, yeah.
The mayor about it a little bit, talking about Halloween's falling on the thirty-first, we've done it before, we've moved trick-or-treating up a day, um, wanted to get the consents of the council and the mayor, and we can do a resolution next week, we just have to do some.